Please remove your caps.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you bless this meeting tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community, God. Be with each person that's in this room tonight and the rest of our citizens. Keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda in the executive session?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Thank you. And we will now adjourn to executive session and we'll return and continue the meeting.
Should we do another prayer?
Public hearings will be with the item to be the O Business item. Citizen comments, do we have any?
There are none tonight.
Public announcements, Mr. Ross?
Good evening. Just a couple announcements. Our next city event is the movie in the park on June the 4th. And tomorrow is the last day that we're accepting sponsorships for the July 3rd celebration. And then we just added the new event, July 30th. It's our back to school drive. We're going to be giving out backpacks to kids in the area within the city, to any child that needs a backpack filled with school supplies. We're partnering with United Way along with several other businesses within the community. And that time will be from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, are you wearing all the hats tonight?
Yes, Mayor. The police report for May, or the April stats for May. We are staffed at 22. We're budgeted for 22 and staffed at 22. Our overtime hours in April were reduced from 57 the previous month to 17 the month of April. Our training hours were at 200. Obviously, March was a heavy training month for us and we anticipate that to be the case annually. Calls for service this month for the police department are down from 1,060 the previous month to 862 for the month of April. Our activity for the month, we had 76 arrests compared to 81 for the month before, one domestic arrest, no DUIs, which is obviously great for the community. Drug charges were down 19 in April versus 37 in March. We did have two theft cases, an increase of one over the previous month of one. 74 traffic citations written for the month, 17 traffic accidents, 17 property damage only, no injury accidents for the month of April, and no fatalities for the month of April.
Are there any questions about this report? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Regarding the fire department monthly report. We continue to see the trend of reduced calls for the fire department. You'll see that in April of 2022, we had 102 calls, and April of 2021, we had 119. So far, for the last three months, we have been down each month from the same month of the previous year, which is a trend that we're also seeing in the police department with a few number of initiated calls. Both of those sets of information from the police department and the fire department are obviously positive for the community. We look forward to seeing those trends be reduced if we can facilitate that in some way. Significant events, there were standard operations within the fire department. We did have 13 overlapping incidents where one crew was on a call and another was on, a call for service was dispatch. That did not interrupt our services. We were able to facilitate each of those calls. We did have four automatic or mutual aid calls to surrounding departments outside the city limits. As is standard each month, we're going to have some of those. There are some training class and hosted training events, the remainder of those bullet points. The middle of the page is an interesting stat, the most important two that we have. Average dispatch to arrival time, five minutes and 28 seconds, which is a good number for our fire department. Also, the average operating time on scene was 13 minutes. As you're well aware, and as we recap each month, the lower that number is, the better it is for the community because we understand that that is a less serious call than calls than takes significantly about time. So the fact that we are on average 13 minutes per call is a good number for our community and for the fire department. Again, we do distribute smoke alarms. If anyone is in need of those or has an interest in those, they can call our direct line at the fire department, 615-799-3473. We continue to request people if they have an emergency, dial 911. It's not uncommon for people on their cell phone to Google or map the fire department. When that number comes up, they'll press the number and it will be the direct line to the fire department. We request that if it's an emergency call to simply dial 911. Our April calls, rescue and emergency calls continue to be our primary amount of service. 76.4% of our calls are that, but we also are aware that our calls and call volume was down for the month, so that's good for all involved. Our next page, the heat location map, obviously, as we've discussed before, the heat location are the red areas or the majority of calls for service. We continue to see the same areas in and around Booby Lake Road there, between there and Walmart, at 96 and 100, and then at 96 and Interstate 40. Again, these are standard. We have seen some pickup on Highway 100 moving away from town toward Franklin, but that's not a significant number of our calls. Our heat map continues to be fairly stable from month to month. The following pages are just photos of some training information that we have. Luckily, the top left, the most important one, there was a no injury accident there. That's always good for us. The remainder of these are standard trainings through the month, and we continue to maintain our training operating hours for the month. Last month, 487 total training hours, which is standard for us. We enjoy continuing to train. Look forward to doing that each month. And then your last page is just a note from the fire department. I won't review, read the entire letter, but it is a document confirming that the City of Fairview has begun hosting local training from local fire departments regionally. Our fire department seems to be a good hub for some training. Having other departments come to our site for onsite training is an obvious benefit to us. It allows us to interact with other firefighters and staff from other areas. It also allows us the opportunity to train the trainer so we can have trained personnel on our staff who can transition that training from employee to employee within the fire department. So these are all good information for us. We very much look forward to having those different agencies here every month and each month to the extent that we can. So those are the police and fire department reports. I'll be glad to answer any questions on those if you have them. I have one item for you tonight under item C, city manager report. Just a reminder that the second reading of the budget will be two weeks from tonight. We have the first reading on the agenda tonight. Once we get there, I'll highlight just a bit of information, but no changes there other than getting the budget finally approved on June 2nd. That will put us a little ahead for the year. As you may recall, we are required by the state code to have our municipal budget adopted by June 30 of each year. This will give us the ability to approve our budget and have all reports to the state before the deadline on June 30. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of those three, and if there are none, I'd defer the mayor to continue with the agenda.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item 10, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. 11, O Business, rezoning of Grove's property. Before we start any of this, I'm going to let our city attorney speak.
Thank you, Mayor. So just as a recap of this, if you'll recall, ordinance 2020-29 passed on first reading and then subsequently passed on second and final reading following a public hearing on May 6, 2021. The night of the hearing, there was some discussion that final stormwater drainage calculations had not been filed, actually filed with the city. They had been reviewed and there had been a letter submitted from an engineering firm that they had, they were in compliance and they were filed. If you'll recall, the action that you took on May 6 of 2021, you approved it on second and final reading contingent upon those drainage calculations being filed, and you know, that sometimes happens. And that did happen. You approved it. Those drainage calculations were filed. There then was a writ of certiorari filed in the Chancery Court for Williamson County, Tennessee. And what those actions are, are essentially actions challenging an action or approval of a city legislative body on procedural grounds. And so the objection that was filed in court was that when you took that second and final vote on May 6, 2021, the stormwater drainage calculations were not filed with the city prior to you taking final approval of the action. And arguably, the zoning ordinance in, for City of Fairview requires stormwater drainage calculations to be filed and submitted prior to approval of a master development plan. So the court granted the petitioner's request to nullify your final approval. The court made no, made no comment or reference regarding the merits of the project or the merits of the stormwater drainage calculations, which were actually filed with the court. But what the court said was that at the time that you took your, you made your final approval on May 6, 2021, that technically the calculations had not been filed with the city prior to your vote. So what the court did, the court remanded the matter to you for any further action you wish to take. The stormwater drainage calculations have now been filed. They've been filed for some time and they were then subsequently amended and filed. I think that they've been, I'm told by city manager, they've been reviewed thoroughly by city staff for compliance. I understand that they do comply, but that's a staff issue. But they have been filed. So you have to, you will, you now have to take action again on the final approval of this project. You can either vote to approve it or not to approve it. The court did not order a second public hearing, so I don't think that's required. However, in consultation with the city manager, we've just suggested that you have one. So there is a public hearing on the agenda tonight so citizens can be heard, I guess, again on this issue. And then you'll be asked to vote a second time to either approve or deny approval of the ordinance 2020-09. And are there any questions for me about that?
Are there any questions for me on the board? Thank you, Mr. Potter. We will open the public hearing. Before we start the public hearing, if there's any outburst, you'll be removed from the building. While there's someone speaking, you will speak to us and not the crowd. I expect all of us to use our good manners tonight and act accordingly. So with that, we will now open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Emily Brogan, 7106 Forest Creek Road.
Is your microphone on?
Yes. It's on.
You want me to repeat that? Okay. Eileen Brogan, 7106 Brush Creek Road South. Thank you, Mayor Rainey and Commissioners, for listening today, and thank you for passing the new stormwater ordinance back in March. I'm not an expert, but it looks like a good one. It has the potential to protect homeowners and the city's most valuable asset, Bowie Nature Park. This evening, you will reconsider the zoning change and master plan for proposed development on the Groves property, which is adjacent to and uphill from Bowie Nature Park and the Cox Run neighborhood. There are several things that I found concerning about the information that was in your packets tonight that most of us have downloaded. The first is the page with the two section elevations. It looks like this. On the previous page, there's a map that shows the location of those section elevations, and I walked the perimeter trail several times a week, so I knew that their estimate of distance was not correct. So I took my tape measure. The distance from that point, those points, Point A to the boundary property, this rendering says is 74.2 feet. It's actually about eight and a half feet, depending on where you call the edge of the trail. And they're talking about the edge of the trail to the boundary between Groves and Bowie. And at Point B, it says it's 67.1 feet, that distance from that point on the trail to the boundary between Bowie and the Groves property, and it's about, actually about nine and a half feet there. So I mean, that's just an inaccuracy, and the whole point of this rendering is to show that the average person isn't going to see the development from the trail, and that kind of throws all that off. The other thing that's inaccurate is the size of the trees and the development. They're shown about 30 feet high based on this guy that's running on the sidewalk being about six feet tall, and that's not going to happen for several decades. So this is inaccurate. And another thing that's really troubling, I mean, far more troubling than this, is the stormwater estimates. The developers said that they would turn them in the day after you all voted back in May. They didn't turn them in until January, and the ones they turned in were based on a version of the development that had already been rejected and had been, it wasn't a recent iteration of the development. And now you have a new set that is way different, and I understand that the old ones were based on a different plan, and the road goes a different place and all of that, but it sure looks to me like the total amount of water coming across that boundary pre-mitigation should be fairly close to the same. But when I looked at the net amount, that's the amount that the developers have to mitigate, that's the amount before, that comes across before development versus post-development without considering mitigation, should be about the same. I mean, the total. It might come across in a different spot because of the roads and where the ditching is, but it should be pretty close. And the new estimates that are from a different engineering firm are less than half of the estimates of the original water estimates that you got back in January. And that, to me, I mean, if I were sitting in your shoes and I was asked to put my name on this, that would really give me pause and go, is this real or is it just a wishful thinking? Because if they're not planning for what's really going to come across that border, then Bowie Park's in trouble. I mean, there's a lot of developments in this town where the water is a big, huge issue. If you look at the development behind Westwood Elementary, Westwood Elementary gets a lot of flooding from that new development. And Otter Creek, I mean, the people that are downstream from there, the damage to their property is already done before, I know somebody had said that TDEC will come in and mitigate that. Well, the damage was already done to that property before TDEC got involved. Please, please, please protect Bowie Park and vote no on this until we get a little bit more information and more detail about that water that's going to be coming across. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Potter, will you once again tell us when those stormwater plans were submitted to the city?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. They were submitted. I do know that you took action in January acknowledging that they had been filed, that they had been filed prior to that date. I'm not sure exactly the date.
Mr. Collins, did we get them the next morning after we voted originally?
We did.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? And also, let it be noted, Eileen, you live outside the city, correct? But she was speaking as friends of Bowie?
I'm speaking for myself. To hear the Bowie. Is this all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name's Ray Peeden. It's 1013 Mohollin Road. I'm a registered professional civil engineer, retired thankfully. I think I've earned that after all those years. And I'm here tonight representing some of the citizens of Fairview and friends of Bowie Park from a technical standpoint. I'm partially trying to read here. I didn't bring my glasses, so excuse me there. Tiffany, Tiffany?
Commissioner.
Oh, you bring me your glasses?
Yes.
Hush. I'll do better without them. No, it's all right. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. Full disclosure, Tiffany Wilson Mobley is my stepdaughter, and Elmer's my son-in-law.
And do you live here in Fairview?
Sorry?
Do you live here in Fairview?
I didn't hear you.
Do you live in Fairview?
I do not. About a year and a half ago, when this all started, the two of them, not knowing much about development, they asked me to just give them my opinion on the plan, and I didn't have any information to go by at the time, but I did. And, you know. So I took a look at it based on what was there in that first presentation. No design work, all just my opinions. And my observations, this won't take long, my observations tonight are kind of backed up by 43 years as a practicing civil engineer with extensive experience in stormwater design, land grading studies, and as a battle-tested developer of 143-acre subdivision to my own. So I know that land development is not for the faint at heart. It's a tough job. I'm not here to complain about the subdivision. I'm a pro-development guy, and I spent most of my life in development, so I hold no prejudice against developing the Grove subdivision, as long as it's done without affecting adjacent landowners in Cox Run, as well as the crown jewel of Fairview Bowie Nature Park. I'm willing to bet that all of you all feel the same way about that part of it. The various submittals by the developer over the last year and a half have been colorful, but they were one-dimensional until this last submittal. Following the recent court order, the latest planned submittal a few days ago offers, for the first time, at least a preliminary glimpse of how they propose to deal with land grading in stormwater drainage and detention. So that's a good thing. Some of my opinions on this latest plan, that just for your information, do with it what you want. Minor point, the plan shown on pages 5, 7, 8 or earlier layouts don't reflect the revised grading plan that the new submittal is. Small point. And just for the record, a stormwater design, quote, "is a computational analysis. It's based on volumes and flow rates and storm frequencies." Still? Oh, that's my granddaughter. But it's based on all those technical things, and this is not to be confused with a stormwater pollution prevention plan. You all probably know this already, but an SWP P, Stormwater Prevention Plan, is basically based on nothing but erosion control and preventing sediment and pollutants from escaping the site during construction. As was said before, the developer has added a new engineering firm, and they put forth a brand-new table. Pre- and post-development values are very different. The new values are significantly less than the ones previously submitted. This could partially be the result of a new grading strategy. I concede that, and a reconfiguring of stormwater zones, but I think the question needs to be asked and answered by the developer. On page 15, the engineer has indicated, for a first time, a cursory overlap grading plan that finally shows in simple strokes how the developer generally intends to grade the site and transport detained stormwater. You all have seen that. The sketch grading plan suggests that all stormwater from the Groves development will be collected either in ditches and swales at selected property boundaries, or possibly in street curb inlets and an underground piping network. That's what those red arrows were on that, oh, I forget which page it was, 15, I guess. But he was coming after me. Some ditches and swales happen to be located in the same narrow zones currently designated as landscape buffers. These zones should be kept separate. Newly planted immature trees will likely not survive in a drainage ditch that's routinely flowing full of stormwater, and the current width of those buffer zones appears to be too narrow to accommodate ditches and buffer trees and vegetations. Also, this is important, lots south of Cox Run toward Bowie Nature Park appear to show nothing to stop stormwater from rolling into Cox Run from the south, and that was a problem with the earlier designs. This is a big red flag because Cox Run is already battling serious stormwater problems even before this development. Property damages have been significant, as you know. All right, number five. The engineering note number two on page 14 indicates that detention basins will handle stormwater flow only for the two-year to 50-year storm events. However, Fairview's new stormwater ordinance requires designs to address 100-year, 24-hour This is in section 14405. Also, just for the record, 100-year storm event, you all probably know this too, is misleading. It doesn't mean a storm that occurs once every 100 years. 100-year storm can occur multiple times in any one year. It's, it was, it's an archaic term that is very misleading, but that's, that comes from a century ago. Engineering note number two also proposes that stormwater exceeding the, quote, "design storm" will be handled by emergency spillways and emergency piping. This is common practice. But in this case, during a 100-year storm, these detention basins could overrun their spillways, sometimes more than once in any one year because of that 100-year definition. It would seem negligent to approve a proposed stormwater design that is guaranteed to flood adjacent properties on a random but frequent basis, sometimes more than once in a year. So I'm saying that the normal procedure for emergency spillways probably should be upgraded to prevent damage to Bowie Park and the Cox Run subdivision. Bowie Nature Park, big issue. This is where I get, kind of ramble a little bit, but bear with me. The requested change from low density to high density has amplified the real potential for damage to Bowie Nature Park. Consider the 100-plus rooftops and related streets and driveways generating stormwater that eventually enters Bowie Park. That's probably half of that upper zone will get to, and I said 100-plus, it could be 90, 110, I don't know, I didn't count them because I don't have a grading plan. During that infrequent but inevitable high-impact 100-year, 24-hour storm, the idea of a few hundred thousand gallons of water flooding Bowie Nature Park could be catastrophic if it create irreversible physical and environmental damage to mature groves of trees, natural vegetation, walking paths, man-made structures, and wipe out natural habitat for animals, birds, amphibians, and so forth. I don't think anybody wants that. If not properly filtered or treated, this water will also transport large quantities of sediment, pesticides, roadway impurities via swales and ephemeral streams into previous pristine downstream pools in Bowie Park. If you all have walked that, you'll know what I'm talking about. If you haven't, I would encourage you to do it because it's kind of a wonderland down there, and that would all be destroyed. This is not what Evangeline Bowie stipulated in her will. In the opinion of many people in this room, exceptional measures for filtering and preserving water quality, not quantity, but quality, should be considered by the city, where longstanding nature environment is prized as Bowie Nature Park. It's a special place, folks. It's going to take some extra work. Switching gears just a minute, one major point that's been carefully glossed over from the beginning, very important, allowing Cox Run Drive to be the developer's primary construction access into their subdivision. And I say their subdivision. This has the potential to be a total disaster for the residents of Cox Run and the city and should be denied. A, it's possible that Cox Run Drive was designed in the 90s to meet routine residential street standards, which, I don't know what it was, but I'm guessing it was 10 inches of DGA, 2 inches of asphalt base, 1 inch of asphalt pavement, maybe. Could be more, but we don't know. But it was a residential design. I suspect this street was not designed to sustain years of repetitious, heavy-duty construction traffic. B, the two greatest impacts on pavement life are loading and repetition. Not just the load, it's how often the loads applied. Imagine Cox Run Drive, a residential street by design, overwhelmed with little boy trailers transporting massive pan excavators, bulldozers, front-end loaders, giant trackhoe excavators, dump trucks, blasting equipment, plus multiple daily 23-ton loads of crushed stone barreling down the street in tandem axle trucks, fully loaded concrete trucks, concrete block deliveries, a steady stream of construction material deliveries, lumber, brick... a steady stream of construction material deliveries, lumber, brick, drywall, on and on for years. In my opinion, by the end of the first year, Cox Run Drive will fail totally. Depression running, potholes, fractured pavement, spalling, crushed underground utilities, plus the daily supply of mud washing down the street, or more likely tracked down the street by those same delivery trucks departing freshly excavated acreage. The dust generated by these trucks will cover cars, houses, and patio furniture. And the city will be responsible for repairing all that damage. More importantly, there's a real human danger for delivery trucks barreling along Cox Run Drive. Since it's a residential street with no sidewalks, residents are accustomed to walking to a neighbor's house, and kids are used to playing in front yards. All it takes is a nine-year-old kid, one loose basketball, and one gravel truck in a hurry. I don't think anybody wants, I don't know how we live with that. Imagine all that traffic and people trying to live their lives as it was before. This project has the potential to last for several years. Allowing construction traffic to use Cox Run Drive for that length of time would have a disastrous impact on property values in Cox Run. In my opinion, the city must require the developer to use his own entrance for all construction traffic, whether it be the planned main entrance off Wayne's Lane or some roadway through the proposed city center from Highway 100. This is their subdivision. It's their responsibility. Should not be put off on the residents of Cox Run. About done. Speaking on behalf of Tiffany Elmer and all the residents of Cox Run, plus the thousands of citizens that consider themselves friends of Bowie Nature Park, all of these problems have solutions. It shouldn't be ignored. The city must recognize its obligation to undertake due diligence. Every member of the Board of Commissioners is a citizen steward of Fairview. Your primary allegiance is to the community and to the constituents who elected you and who will vote in the future. All you owe any developer is an open-minded opportunity to present their proposals and make a judicious decision. In closing, all concerns that I and these citizens are presenting here tonight will not go away. If the city elects not to deal with legitimate concerns now, these consequences will just show up later, whether you're on the board or another board has to deal with it. It makes sense now to ask the developer to respond to these concerns, which will be reasonable, and for the city to insist on suitable remedies for some of these elements that I posited here tonight. If the developer in good faith has responsible answers for all of them, he should have no problem adjusting them to Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this that actually lives in Fairview? If you'll tell us your name and your address. You're good.
I'm Sherry Wright. I live at 7278 Old Franklin Road. I'm actually here speaking on, on behalf of the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. Just have a statement, and it's very quick, and just some questions that maybe at some point could be answered. So as you all know, the mission of Bowie, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park is to preserve, protect, and enhance and promote Bowie Nature Park as a nature park for use by the general public and a nature reserve and park. So accordingly, from the start of this whole discussion of the Groves' property rezoning, our primary concern has been its potential impact on the park. And just to be clear, we, and again, representing the entirety of Friends of Bowie Nature Park, are not anti-development at all. We were so pleased to see some of the changes on behalf of the developer and the city officials have, have sought in response to the feedback. We just did have some questions that we felt it was important to understand for us and for anybody else that was interested in the park and really felt strongly about that. Do the city officials, the Board, agree with the most recent numbers reflecting the additional water outflows from the, that she received from the developer? Do you believe that those additional water, that additional water number is acceptable or those numbers are acceptable, reflecting additional outflow into the park? And is there a mitigation strategy in place or planned to address the additional water outfalls into the park, mainly along the perimeter trail, of course, where some areas are already receiving excessive water when there's heavy rainfalls and flooding? So, and not just in terms of water flow, but also ecological impact that it would have, as was referenced in other people's comments earlier. And that's really all. That's our major concerns and just the questions that we have and would love at some point for somebody to address those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would, sir? No, you, no. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Tim Rocco, 7315 Cox Run Court. First, I'd like to set the record straight and clear the air quite a bit here. I've heard a few times, and I'm quite certain that the majority of the people in this community understand that the Board of Commissioners does not introduce proposals for annexation or rezoning. In fact, it's important to point out that primarily it's companies from outside of Fairview with large financial interests that are making these requests. It's also appropriate to mention that these companies will stand to make millions of dollars if and when these zoning annexations requests are approved. The Board is tasked with considering these requests and making decisions that are best fit for the city and its citizens. Large part of that decision-making process should involve assembling, digesting, and evaluating quite a lot of information from different sources, much like putting together a comprehensive business plan. Which brings me to something we've heard over and over again from our city manager. These meetings should and will be run like business meetings. I agree. I'm fortunate in that I hold a master's degree from Vanderbilt University in Business, and I have been sought after and employed for more years than I care to mention to consult for different companies. I say this only to give you a credentialed perspective and ask you to consider the context of this rezoning request as a business case. So let's talk business. I, and many of the people in this room, by all accounts, should be considered longtime, regular, and loyal customers of the City of Fairview. I've lived in Cox Run subdivision and have systematically paid property tax for 23 years. In my opinion, every homeowner should consider that substantial earned equity in the community. I and most of the people in this room have funded the operation and growth of this business known as the City of Fairview. While consulting for clients, I was always careful to advise them not to do anything that could potentially harm or upset their loyal customer base. Chasing short-term dollars or adopting a churn-and-burn focus can be the beginning of the end for long-term growth strategy in business. Now, don't get me wrong. Plenty of people out there and plenty of strategies that effectively make quick dollars and move on to the next business. They typically don't stay around very long, and they're typically not a foundational aspect of your community. Businesses and brands work hard to gain the trust from customers. It's a primary focus. Shouldn't a community feel the same way, have the same focus? Inconsistency in direction or service is a major cause for lack of trust, resulting in customer churn and very difficult and expensive to regain. That being said, the development plan before you, an R20 with a pod, is contrary and inconsistent to what your current customer base in the adjoining areas expects. The overlay increases density and impervious surfaces on a smaller footprint, which will exacerbate the harmful effects to the surrounding areas, primarily storm runoff, stormwater runoff, but also noise and light pollution. It's easy to put the cart before the horse and chase revenue. However, just like in business, it takes careful and thoughtful planning to create a long-term, sustainable growth plan. Things like adequate infrastructure to support a growing community, ensuring city services are adequate to support an increase in numbers. Are your fundamentals solid? Is there a sharp vision of what the future of the city will look like? Most importantly, how will this impact my current customer base? And will it improve their experience as citizens of this community? The current trend in investment real estate now is for companies to buy large tracts of houses at discounts and then lease them out to create a steady revenue stream for its investors. Does that sound like a value add for the people who live and work here? I ask you that you do not simply rush this decision through as a mere procedural technicality. Instead, step back, reexamine the materials presented, as any good business would do, and then make an informed business decision. Remember, we are your customers. We are valuable. We have invested in this community. We are the City of Fairview.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Court. And honestly, I had a lot of trouble writing this speech tonight, not because of a lack of what to say, but because, because of the gravity of the decision that lies before you and the damaging effects that this decision may have on places that are dear to me. My home, my neighborhood, and the park where we, like so many others, have basically raised our children. And because there's so much to say, I was actually hoping one of my daughters might write this speech because they care and are very worried about these two places, too. The Bowie Nature Park, they actually were just there for a student council end-of-the-year celebration, and of course, their family home, where they hope to return to even after college and where they lie their heads down every night. All of this lies vulnerable in your hands as you vote on our future. Both our girls are excellent speechwriters, much better than I, but they have their own work to do. Our oldest is Fairview High's one of the valedictorians and also student body president. She has her own speeches. Our other daughter is also extremely busy. So I'm on my own, and that's okay. I am their mom, and just like any parents, like all of you, we'd do anything to protect them. We'd put ourselves in front of a moving bus to stop it. Or to save them or something they love from ruin or destruction. So I thank you for listening to my words tonight. I have written them for my children, and I hope I make them proud. Mayor Rainey, I appreciate reading an article in The Tennessean titled "Meet Fairview City Commission Candidate Debbie Rainey." It was published on October 14, 2016, and when you were asked, when, what do you believe are the most important issues facing the city and describe how you would address them? You said, "It is important to retain the trust and respect of our neighbors, our citizens. We can do that by being open and transparent, make decisions that even when they are hard are fair and based on fact and best practices." It is also important we listen to and really hear concerns brought to the Board. And then when you were asked about past experiences that you believe make you most qualified, you, ma'am, talked about your long history in Fairview, which was 40 years at the time, and how you've had the great pleasure of getting to know the people here. And my favorite part of what you said was that you would advocate for the residents that do not have a seat on the BOC, and if you were elected, you would serve those residents. Thank you for saying that and your commitment to be my voice, our voice. As my voice, really for all of you, whom I voted for, all of you. As my voice, I'm asking you to deny the pod for this development because it is the wrong zoning for this piece of land. Even after so many revisions and more calculations, there are still serious problems and inconsistencies, as you have heard. And I'm really grateful that even though my stepdad doesn't live in this town, he is a registered civil engineer and helped us look over this and give us opinions. Very grateful. Why do we continue to have inconsistencies? Why do we continue to hear about these problems with this plan? It's the pod. It is too many houses concentrated on too little land, and it is absolutely not right as the neighbor to Bowie Nature Park. If you leave it at R40 or even change it to a straight R20, you'll be able to have a much higher probability to create a development that will have less homes, beautiful homes, million-dollar homes, on land in Williamson County bordering a precious jewel, nature preserve. But because there will be less homes, the applicant could actually work with the land, take out less trees that are already soaking up water, excuse me, and put in more effective mitigation strategies and more mitigation strategies, which are best practices. They can handle the water pollution that comes down from this development with less Mr. Butler, you were quoted in a May 21, 2021 article in The Tennessean saying, "This is a local group that I feel like really cares about their product, that I feel like is going to be a good contributor to the City of Fairview." And you also noted how the developers adjusted their plans based on citizens' concerns. Sir, I will have to respectfully disagree. I appreciate you wanting the plan adjusted based on citizen concerns, but even if the needle is moving just a little closer, it is in no way addressing our serious concerns about pollution, the effects it will have on wildlife, plant life, human life, erosion, flooding, the septic step field that has to be so big to accommodate all those homes and its impact on Hickman Branch, Little Turnbull, Big Turnbull, down to the Harpeth. Also, traffic concerns, still many security concerns about the other entrance, and just the overall not wanting a development near the park, which was a clear indication on the Fairview 2040 plan. In that survey that was done, the citizens said they wanted to keep the rural feel of Fairview. They wanted to have nothing smaller than half-acre lots, and they did not want developments near Bowie. I'm sorry, nothing smaller than quarter-acre lots. Now, you may say that was a small number of people that filled out that survey for the original plan, but to my knowledge, the city has not done a follow-up survey asking those same questions. So if you vote this forward, you're doing it, sir, and others, without knowing what your citizens want and likely going against what they feel, which seems to be counter with what you want. I believe it would be wise to do that before you move forward with zoning like a pod that does the exact opposite of what was indicated. And right now, we could actually go over to Fairview Middle, where half the town is, probably for an eighth-grade ceremony, and pass out that survey and see what we could find out. Knowing this information first would actually help you know if the citizens' concerns have actually been taken into account and if adjustments were made. Since you don't know those concerns and since the adjustments certainly do not address the originals' concerns that we've continued to bring to you since January 2021, no, it's not, it's not addressing those concerns. So please do not move the pod forward. Another concern expressed in Hope that was corrected is discussion about the buffer and Commissioner Butler and Commissioner Dawson, and many of you have brought this up. The developers added a road in hopes that would address the concern. Again, I will say that is not the case. Here's some information you should know. I would like to share it with you. It was written by an environmental specialist who is 40-plus years. The proposal by the developer to add width to the buffer in the form of a road adjacent to Bowie Nature Park as a way to protect it from increased stormwater damage and drainage is a ridiculous idea. is a ridiculous idea for a number of reasons. Since the goal is to protect the park and slow down the water going into it from the outside, adding pavement to a buffer will in fact speed up the flow since the road surface is impermeable. Stormwater management plans always include the objective of getting water to move more slowly, less reducing erosion and movement of pesticides and other chemicals where they're not wanted. This objective can be achieved when the movement of water during storm events is slowed down, not sped up." So a road as a part of the buffer is actually not doing what a buffer needs to be doing, which is absorbing. We need, the end of this is, we have to have the buffer be wider and natural. Vice Mayor Anderson is not here tonight, but I know she has expressed concerns as well and feels TDEC and more oversight by the city will make sure that nothing goes wrong. I appreciate her commitment so much in trying to protect us, but I'm sorry to say it won't. I wish it would. TDEC won't protect us. TDEC is involved when pollution is a problem, when it is already a problem. They don't monitor stormwater. They don't monitor erosion. They don't monitor if places like my home or the park are flooding. They can't do anything about it. I've talked to TDEC. I know you have. I know Vice Mayor Anderson has. And the thing is, they're understaffed. This is a reality. Developers notoriously tie up the process in courts and other techniques and get around those violations. And in the meantime, real damage happens. So Vice Mayor Anderson, if you are here tonight, and for all of you, if there is one doubt in your mind about if TDEC can handle this, because they won't do that, that's not what they do. If there is one doubt in your mind that you can't keep us safe, don't take that chance on my family or on all our families or our park. Just don't take that chance, please. And Commissioner Lucas, I've received an email from you that I really appreciated, sir. You said you put thought and prayer into your votes. I know you do a lot of work through your church serving and that you have a daughter whom my children watched in place and have grown up alongside. You obviously care about the people doing good. Let me tell you about some good people I know, sir, and everyone. Gary McElhaney, he lives next door to me. He doesn't want people to see him do this, but he gets up in the wee hours of the morning on snowy days, and he puts out salts on our roads because they're sloped up so that it will melt the ice and then we can get to work and back home again safely. He does that just because he's a good person. Shelley Harris, who lives up from him. Shelley Harris has been dealing with mold and flooding in her home for 22 years, and we're not, the city's not able to help her. She figured out what she could do is put a pipe down from her house, but that would send it down to her neighbors below her, and she just refuses to do that. So what she does instead is she's trying to plant flowers and put in bushes and trees just to do that for her neighbors, which again, good people. Eileen Brogan, who's here and spoke to you earlier. Eileen Brogan has devoted a huge part of her life keeping the memory of Dr. Bowie alive by dressing up and being in character and teaching children and adults alike. She does that just because she's a really, really good person, not for pay. She does it for all of us. Speaking of the park, all of the children that visit that park during school field trip, like we just had one for a reading challenge at Fairview Elementary, and that was the benefit. So imagine that, a reading challenge and the reward was going to the park, into a park that Dr. Bowie created for those children. Dr. Bowie was the ultimate good person. If she were here today, I would ask her what she thinks we should do and how you all should vote. I believe she would not endorse this any development with a pod, which allowed for so many more homes, even with the plan to show it, and a road right next to that park. Why? Because she knows what that land used to be, and she knows what went into making it what it is today. She worked hard for something she loves, and when you love something that much, you don't do anything to put it at risk. Once again, the pod is wrong for this piece of beautiful land full of hardwoods and amazing wildlife. It doesn't have to be this way. There is something that blesses us all. There's a plan that blesses us all, even the developers. Ultimately, the only reason for a pod on this land is money. It's the money the applicants will make off of having more homes on smaller lots. And if money is the only reason, then it's not necessary to have a pod. The applicants can make many millions of dollars with an R-40 or a straight R-20. And Mr. Butler, I know that you've said that an R-40 or an R-20 don't require a master development plan, but I say, why take that risk on something less appropriate and more risky for the land and then also not listen to the concerns of the citizens about those risks? R-20s get approved all the time. And why can't you ask for a plan that's an R-20 or R-40? I mean, this is what I don't understand. You are the commissioners, and we appreciate you, and this is your town, and we are your residents. The applicants are the ones who want the privilege of being here. So they have the responsibility of giving you a plan that not only addresses your citizens' concerns, but eliminates them. What I don't understand is, why haven't they yet? This development has had a year and a half to get something to you that proves it is safe and addresses the concerns of the citizens. I have a letter here from the public record written by an environmental assessment agency to Dan Allen in June 2020, two years ago, talking about the risks on the environment in that area, about Section 404s and ARAPs needed and the threatened species that are there. So they've had this information, and after they bought this land and now know what it really takes to protect it and the park and those of around us, why haven't they changed the request and taken off the pod themselves and showed you a plan for an R-40 or an R-20 that works? My guess, again, it's money. They want to capitalize on our town's small-town charm and beautiful nature preserve, and they think they can make a lot more money with a lot more homes on a lot less land. Well, that's not a good enough reason. It's not a good enough reason. My children, your children, our grandchildren, and all the people of Fairview, we are worth more than the money the applicants can make. Generations of good people built this town and maintain this town all these years, some since 1904. The people of Fairview, they believe in you, and they elected you, and you took a vow to protect them over any developers' need or want for more money. And they can still make that money with an R-40 or an R-20, and we can still have the town center. It could bless us all and them. The citizens of Fairview absolutely need a plan that 100% won't hurt existing homes or the park. Commissioners, you can do this, and we will be completely behind you. Stand up for us right now, please, and tell the applicants, the developers, that if they want a piece of Fairview, such an important piece of Fairview, they have to bring you something that's right. They have the money, the creativity, the tools, the techniques to draw up such a plan for R-20 and R-40. They do. They can bring you a plan that's not risky and does bless us all, including them. And the first step and the only way you can make them do this is by denying the pod. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not sure how many more speakers there are, but I would make a suggestion that there be a limit on the time each speaker is allowed. We have a lot of business on the agenda tonight. It's going to be a really long night, so.
Okay, thank you.
Three minutes is typically what you've done before.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this?
So three minutes, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Elmer Mobley. I'm at 7303 Cox Run Court. So I'm going to try to get this down to three minutes, so bear with me. So our hope is that you deny the rezoning and allow the developer to come back with a plan that's more in line with the existing homes and neighborhoods around it. Fewer homes and larger lots will mean that there's more space to account for the very real challenges of preventing more stormwater problems for the Cox Run subdivision and for the park. And as we learned last Friday, we have a brand-new set of stormwater calculations from a new engineering firm that are drastically different. This new set of calculations show very different post-development volumes of stormwater that are somehow significantly less than the ones submitted. We're left asking why. There aren't less homes. The buffer hasn't been increased. What accounts for the difference? And are we 100% confident that this plan before you is adequate? And while we appreciate that the new engineering firm has provided much more details related to stormwater detention, as well as proposed grading plans, many concerns still remain, including the buffer. The real chance that with 80% of the proposed homes being packed down below near the border to the park, that pollution like sediment, pesticides, and fertilizers from the yards along with oil chemicals and construction debris and other pollution do pose a significant threat to the park, and there's not enough space with the buffer proposed to filter that out. So again, we urge you to vote no tonight and recommend a zoning that's on half-acre lots and allow for your city engineering staff to conduct a full review and discussion following their new, more rigorous guidelines and our new stormwater ordinances. We believe you owe it to the community, to the taxpayers, the city, and to the thousands who love the park to be sure that this development will not forever alter and potentially damage the park beyond repair. As elected members of the Board of Commissioners for the city of Fairview, it's fair to say that you have the authority and responsibility to the citizens you represent to do just that. We're asking you to vote no tonight so we don't have to rely on help that won't come from TDEC. Up to the end there, so. You can vote no tonight and show the voters of Fairview that you are listening to their concerns. It's not that unheard of. Just last month, the city of Franklin voted no to the Brownland Farms development based on concerns over flooding. Ultimately, it was the will of the people of Franklin that won the day. As Alderman-at-Large Brandy Blanton said, "For me, I would have voted for it, but when you have the people of the community who have elected you to office and they come out in droves, you have to support the people who voted you in." And that last bit bears repeating. You have to support the people who voted you in. Either way you vote tonight, the voters of Fairview are watching and waiting. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If there's no one else? If you'll tell us your name and your address, please.
I'm Wendy Perella. I live at 7110 Mangrum Drive. Never done this before, so bear with me. Mangrum Lane, I guess it is. I've lived there for about 16 years, and I already have substantial visual issues with stormwater and erosion. I have lots of mature trees in my yard, which you can see the roots to every one of them now, and that's just occurred over the last few years. And I don't, I agree with everything that everyone before me has said because that's my neighborhood. That's where I've invested many hours in my yard, my garden, trying to make it a better The water that stands in our yard now, just on a basic rainy Saturday or whatever, I can float a boat in my neighbor's yard, which comes to mind because I'm lower than he is. I'm downhill from Cox Run, so it's easy to see where the water will go when all the trees are gone from up there. It's going to come right down to where we are. My patio floods right now, every time it rains, every time. So when there's more water coming, what's going to happen? There's a storm pipe that comes under the street that runs into my yard through my garden, where we try to grow vegetables, that smells terrible. I don't know what the smell is. We've called to report it before. We'll send somebody out there. No one ever shows up. All of that water runs through my yard and down behind me, where there's other homes behind me. The water has to go somewhere, and I just feel like somebody needs to pay attention to what's going on right now before we start a whole nother mess of problems. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this matter?
Hi.
If you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Rosalie Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Court. Hi. This is unprepared. I just felt like, you know, I care about this community, so I should say something. I have lived here all of my life, or well, since I was like three months old, you know, basically, all my life. I've been going to Bowie Park all my life. I was actually just there for my student council banquet. I remember in elementary school, we used to go to Bowie for a field trip and learn about Dr. Bowie and how she set up Bowie Park and how it was this big part of Fairview, how it was like this major part that we all got to learn about and all got to go to and all got to cherish. And so just the idea of that, I'm sorry, the idea of that important part of my childhood, of my life, of my community, being ruined, like, that's kind of hard to think about, you know? And so I would just like to request that, like Commissioner Lucas, I know your daughter, I know your two daughters, Commissioner Butler, I see Helen in the mornings. I know that they would not want this city that they grow up in, that they're going to grow up in, to be ruined. I don't want my house to be ruined, and if this development goes in as it's planned right now, my house will be messed up. It will be ruined. I might have to move. I might have to move away from my friends, my family. I don't want that to happen, you know? So I would just request that before you guys vote tonight, you really think about the youths of this community, of this town, and how this is going to impact us, how this is going to take out a part of my childhood and of my life by destroying my town, by destroying my park, by destroying my house. Also, I would just like to request that, I'm in high school and I'm able to stay off my phone, so I would just like to request that everyone here also, please stay off their phone while my mom is talking, while my dad is talking, while my neighbors are talking. Also, here's this statement from my grandpa. He has 40-plus years as a professional doing stuff like this. I wasn't sure if you guys got to hear it, so here. That's it. Thank you.
You'll tell us your name and your address, please.
Megan Street, 1062 Highway 96 North. I, hi Rosie. I was going to come in. I've been thinking about coming in here because I'm a high schooler too. I've lived here since the dose was a Best Buy or something, way before Publix and Walmart. And the growth has been good, but with Bowie, Bowie has been the one place that you can go to and see nature and see the quietness, and I love going there and I love walking there, and that's the one place that we have even just as teenagers to go to, but it's the one place people come to Fairview to see Bowie, and if we don't have Bowie, they can't come see it. And on that note, I've been to quite a few of these meetings, and I've been here, sorry, and I've been, I've heard so much about this in the community, and the people of Fairview are not being heard. And as someone who has grown up here since she was four years old and has so much family and has farmland that's being destroyed right now, it's really just, I don't want to live here, and that hurts me because this is my place, this is my town. I know everyone. I know everyone here, and the people and my family are what matter to me. And if we don't have Bowie Park, we aren't going to draw people in, one, but if we don't have Bowie Park, what do the people of Fairview get? What can we have? What can we keep nature and keep as Fairview, because there's no buildings on it, nothing. It's just Bowie. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? Saying no one, then we will close the public hearing. We will now move to O Business, Adam A. Two. Commissioner Butler?
Second and final reading ordinance 22, 2020-29, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview by rezoning 124.43 acres of property consisting of map 43 parcel 6 and map 43 parcel 26, located at Wayne's Lane and Mangrum Lane from RS40 single-family low-density residential to an R20 single-family medium-density residential planned overlay development and approving a master development plan. Owners Cory Groves and Johnny Groves.
We have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion among the board members?
Mayor, could we have the developer come and talk to us for a minute?
Of course.
David McGowan, I'm president of Regent Homes.
Okay, let's get your microphone fixed so everyone will be able to hear you.
David McGowan, President of Regent Homes.
You've heard some of the concerns that have been addressed. Do you want to address any of those, or Mr. Dawson, do you have specific questions?
Mr. McGowan, it'd probably be easier if we did talk about some of these specifically. I know there were a bunch of things that came out. And we can generalize some of these specifically about stormwater. You have an engineer or a company that determines whether the stormwater that comes off of this piece of property will be mitigated. And do you feel confident that you're going to mitigate that stormwater?
Yes, sir. We actually have one of our engineers here today, Eric.
That'd be great.
Here with us, and to give you an idea of what goes on with one of these type developments, we come up with a conceptual plan, and if you go back over a year ago, over about a year and a half ago, we came up with a conceptual plan. And that plan has morphed over years into what it is today. And a lot has been taken in by the comments of the residents. If you go back, they were very concerned about homes directly being over to look in the park. And so what we did, we decided to create a buffer and then put the roads and then put their home behind that. In addition to that, you know, the road actually will serve as access to the park for the future residents, so they can go in there and actually have trailheads that they'll actually be able to go onto that park. And so this plan has been adjusted due to the stormwater concerns of the residents. And so we actually just submitted last week, I believe it was, the latest stormwater figures on the latest design. Some of this design has changed a little bit because of the sewer designs. Some of it's been changed by the additional topo information we got. But we are very concerned about stormwater. We've been developing in the Middle Tennessee in the area since 1998. We do quite a bit of development. We will deliver over 500, 600 homes in the Middle Tennessee area this year, as well as some apartment complexes and things of that nature. And so when we use the engineers, we use engineers that we're using right now. They've been in, doing work for us for over 40 years. And so Eric's right here today. And so Eric, you know, when you talk about the post-detention and the pre-detention on that, if you look at that map, I don't know if you've got it, that we submitted the other day, but you can see that we actually make sure that we created additional areas in order to retain the water and be able to release it at the right proper amount. So we're feeling real confident that we have addressed the stormwater. The lot count has actually gone down. What's the current lot count? Do you know? Off the top of your head. I believe the lot count has come down a little bit in adjusting for the stormwater that we want to be able to treat there.
And I guess we have a couple of questions specifically that the community asked tonight. And that was with the 50-year storm event versus the 100-year. Can you talk as an engineer specifically about that?
The last ordinance change or the change, it went from the 25-year to the 50-year, and we will detain the 50-year storm. As far as the 100, I believe that's only for commercial. Now, there will be some detention for that, but it won't meet pre-development rates. Oh, sorry. With the last, with the stormwater ordinance that was revised this past, I think, last year, it went from the 25-year to the 50-year storm that was required detention, and we'll detain up to the 50-year. You know, detention will be provided for the 100-year storm to kind of help, you know, but it won't meet pre-development, you know, as per the regulations. Now, as far as the existing subdivisions of the Northeast, I think on that grading plan, we tried to redirect all that water away from those houses. It looked like kind of a lot of sheet flows going down there. Kind of, you know, I don't like discharging water in the rear yard, so we're going to try and keep it, you know, as far as, and turn it north. And then as far as on the Northeast corner, we'll direct that to the south using pipes. You know, I think on that road heading up to the north, we'll catch that with some curb inlets, bring it back to those lots, and then bring it back to the south. We kind of keep stuff from coming off those, you know, going onto those existing houses.
There's a question specifically about velocity, and I know exactly what you were trying to do with that road. Try to increase the buffer to keep the houses further away from that property line. That was a concern that some citizens had. But there's a question now about velocity. It increases the velocity. Have you figured that velocity into your water plan?
I know. I think what they're talking about is if you got runoff going over pavement, it does pick up speed.
Correct.
What we'll do is we'll capture all that water in the curbs and gutters of the road.
Okay.
And turn it into a pond, where then it'll discharge through a pipe. Where a lot of times, you know, we'll do the low-flow orifice, restrict that flow coming out of the pond. So we won't let sheet water come off that road onto the park.
Correct. So you do specifically have a plan for that velocity?
Yeah, it will be caught in the road and then be taken to a pond, so it won't sheet flow off the road.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we got the arrows on there kind of showing, we're going to try and redirect that to a pond.
That's one of the reasons the post-development number is higher, because of velocity. The water's getting to the ponds quicker. And so the ponds are going to capture the water and release it at an equal or less than quantity.
Yeah, and we also took into account all the tree cover and all that, because when you cut down the trees, just cutting down the trees is going to increase your flow off that site. So we took that into account, looking at aerial photos, looking at the existing tree cover, and then kind of assumed what we're going to cut out. But when we do final numbers, that'll all be hammered out.
And our engineers have looked at your plan and made sure that it meets what our new ordinance requires?
Yes, they will. And then when we resubmit final plans, it'll go through the review process.
So is this normal, you know, to submit a set of stormwater plans and then have revisions as you go through the process? Because I don't think everybody understands that, that, and Mr. Collins, you may want to specifically talk about that.
The stormwater plan is simply that. Stormwater plan, it's not a construction plan.
Okay.
Once we get to the construction plan and we actually, that's when we'll get into the construction of the road, the pipe, the discharge, the locations for those things. The construction plan is different than the master plan or the stormwater plan. Now, the stormwater plan is conceptual, that moves water off of the side or retains water on the side, or whatever the case is. Our engineering staff has reviewed this extensively, and our interpretation of this is on independent review is that this improves stormwater coming off of the side in every direction. We have not found, in our review, an instance where there's a greater stormwater impact of any sort. So that was our discussion as to getting through that. So in addition to the review where it meets the requirements, it also appears not only to meet the requirement, but to redirect water to a safer location. If you're looking at the map primarily, it would move the water substantially to the northwest part of the subdivision. It would remove. I know there's discussion about Mangrum Drive, where there's some water that runs down Mangrum Drive. That water actually comes off of the Groves property, off of the ridge that runs east to west. It makes its way around Cox Pike and turns halfway down into the neighborhood. Substantial now, that water will be removed. It will no longer make its way to the neighborhood. It will no longer meander around Cox Pike or Cox Run and make its way in. It will simply be retained on the Groves property side and redirected northeast away from Cox Pike subdivision. Regarding the stormwater that will go into the park, that has actually been remediated as well. And where the discussion was that, again, water running off of that ridge runs into the park, and the water that currently runs off of the ridge into the park would be captured in the storm drain outlets on the perimeter road that borders Bowie Nature Park. So that should be a reduction of that water flowing to the south and to the east. All that water will be directed primarily to the northwest, away from Bowie and away from Cox Run subdivision. That's our review of it, and it appears to exceed our requirements.
Thank you. The only other thing that I have, Mayor, is just one other question, and it's about the construction entrance, you know, using that Cox Run. How are we going to be responsible for the people that currently live there? It's a city street. We know that. We know it's a city street. That means people can use that for whatever they need to use it as. How are we going to be responsible partners using that as a construction entrance?
We develop all over Middle Tennessee area, and we're developing in, writing down in Fairview, in Pepper Tree, also Sugar, Pepper Tree and out at Otter Creek and a couple of other neighborhoods here. And so, you know, basically when we go out to the site, your city codes director is very stringent on us on how we conduct ourselves. We have to put silt fence up on those properties. We have to maintain erosion control on those properties. And if we ever come in there and drag mud up down the street, you know, they're going to come see us, and they'll tell us, hey, we're going to give you a warning. Next time, it's going to be a fine. But so we have to take and maintain sweepers to make sure that the streets stay clean and all that. Also, so you know, even though this got challenged in court, we never stopped engineering. And we never stopped engineering on the Fairview Town Center either. So if you look at the site plan yourself, you'll see we'll actually have access to come through the Town Center. So we see grading operations and construction roads built to be able to bring equipment in to this particular site. So it will not be something that's done in isolation. It'll be done with conjunction of Fairview Town Center. So we see quite a bit of grading going on in this site, and that it will start at the front of the property and come all the way through, from the Town Center property all the way through. We try to minimize any kind of traffic disturbance for the neighbors, but there will be traffic. We can't deny that. There will be traffic come through there. But we'll do our best to take and maintain it. In addition to that, you know, whether it's weight limits on trucks and things like that, we try to make sure that we're not going to take and tear their roads up coming and developing the community right there.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is there anything else from the board?
There's a few references to TDEC and oversight by TDEC, and one of the biggest things we made is a huge investment in our staff and also the stormwater ordinance. And so now we have the enforcement power. We have the oversight. We have staff in place who is qualified to review, inspect. There's a few notes that I made just from the new stormwater ordinance, some things that it did. It increased to the 50-year stormwater detention pond design. So prior, the state had 25-year. We've increased to 50. It mitigates some tree removal based off areas with greater slopes. Our staff is requiring the detention ponds to be built first, which is something in order to have the pond in to be able to capture stormwater runoff immediately. And then also, one thing we, a lot of mention was about pollution, stormwater quality. And so our new stormwater ordinance, we've never had this before, requires them to capture the first inch of water runoff and to be held in detention ponds. So that's trying to get sediments, just trying to get pollutions to run into the pond to sit and to settle down, so it won't be able to immediately be released to the streams. And in zoning, in overall, the density total is 1.38 units per acre. The pod allows for a smaller lot size. There's, I think, 52% of them, 48% of the lots are 10,000 square foot. Then they step up 11,000, 12,000, 13, 14. There's some 20s in there. The pod also allows us to create things like a park buffer, to create buffers to the adjoining parcels. If it was an R20 or an R40, there would be no master development discussion. They could be directly up to the park boundary. They could be directly up to the adjoining property boundary. So the pod does have some ways where the lots may shrink, but it also has some, there would be no open space requirements on an R20, R40. There's 43 acres of open space here. There's some walking trails. There's pros and cons to the outlay. And so the pod allows for us to try and require things like the buffer and things.
Mayor, I just had one other thing.
Okay.
This is certainly an emotional discussion, and it can very quickly turn into an emotional vote. And I know, speaking for myself and talking to other commissioners, we really try to curb that emotion. We try to be objective in what we decide and what we talk about and what we look at. I feel the developer is a reputable developer, and I feel that stormwater is going to be mitigated. This is the first opportunity for Fairview to make sure that we assist with that mitigation with our stormwater ordinance plan. I, however, am very concerned about the consistency when we start talking about zoning for subdivisions and having contiguous subdivisions. So when we start talking about R20, R20 pod and so forth, if we have half-acre lots in a subdivision and that subdivision is going to continue into another, I am very much up on having that same consistency throughout the subdivisions. With that being said, I'm very confident in the developer, in our stormwater plan. And I can tell you, once again, this is for my own opinion, I am highly concerned about Bowie Nature Park and about the residents in proximity to any new development. And you certainly are our customers, and we are certainly listening to everything that you say. Thank you.
I'd like to say one other thing to you, that we're a local company, yeah, 64 employees employed throughout Middle Tennessee. We develop in Rutherford County, Davidson County, Wilson County, Wimson County. And we're down in Mount Pleasant. We're in Columbia, all those type of different areas. And we do try to give back to the community. I'm past chairman of the Adventure Science Center downtown, still on their board. Past chairman Habitat of Greater New Humanity, still on their board. Just recently, we're able to help them acquire a 40,000-square-foot facility in Lebanon for a new restore out there. And so we're very heavily involved. We've also already donated some money for a new park that's going to be built here. So we try to be part of the community, and we plan on being a part of the community. We hope to enhance Bowie Park by having trailheads that will actually have a nice gazebo or something that people can sit under and cool under and all. So we want to be part of it and enhance that particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions? Mr. Lucas, any questions? Hearing no more discussion here. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
And Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It has been requested that we take a break, so we'll take a 10-minute break before our next item. New business 12A. Commissioner Butler?
Resolution 1122, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approved, approving a plan of services 7350 Snow Mangrum Road.
We have heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
New business, item 12B. Commissioner Butler?
Resolution 12 dash 22, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent and approving a plan of services 7360 Snow Mangrum Road.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, just a few comments or notes. This is at, at the end of Snow Mangrum, which is the adjoining road next to the, the high school, Renza High School. These two parcels are part of a bigger parcel that's currently being, having a home built in the city of Fairview. And it's almost just a donut hole where it's the only piece that's not annexed in that area, just for reference of where it is.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
12C. Commissioner Butler?
First reading ordinance 2022 dash 19, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 15 acres of property known as 7656 Horn Tavern Road, consisting of Wimson County Tax Map 22, parcel 17, from RS40 residential to RS15 residential, property owner Gene Hatcher.
We've heard the reading of the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, this parcel's next to Pepper Tree off of Horn Tavern. You see it on the map there. It was a positive planning commission vote.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Okay, are we at E or D? Thank you. First reading of ordinance 2022-
Sorry, D. I skipped one for you. D. I told you wrong.
Final reading of ordinance 2022, this is what I get for listening to you, dash 20. Commissioner Butler?
First reading ordinance 2022, 2022 dash 20, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning two acres of property known as 7652 Horn Tavern Road, consisting of Wimson County Tax Map 22, parcel 18, from RS40 residential to RS15 residential, property owner Gene Hatcher.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Same adjoining parcel to prior.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
12E, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 21. Commissioner Butler?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 4.52 acres of property located on Wiley Court, consisting of Wimson County Tax Map 42, HC, parcel eight, from RS40 residential to C1 commercial, property owner Lloyd Hardcastle.
We've heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, this parcel you see on the map there kind of is to the western side of Food Saver. It goes from Wiley Circle to Highway 100 and does meet the future plan as a commercial use.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
12F, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 22. Commissioner Butler?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 7.2 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Wimson County Tax Map 47, parcel 10, from Industrial General to C1 commercial, property owner France Scott Fetzer Company.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, this is the old France site, I guess, almost from across from Tractor Supply. Positive planning commission vote and it does meet the, the future use for a commercial area.
Any other discussion?
What is C1 for again? The zoning specifically for C1?
Could not spit those off. Maybe Mr. Collins could.
From memory, I'm sorry.
Retail.
From memory, there can be hotel, restaurants, banking and similar, similar businesses. That's not the, all inclusive, that's the majority of the-
Thank you.
And I think the owner totally said it's going to be a 14,000 square foot retail. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
12G, first reading of ordinance 2022 dash 23. Commissioner Butler?
An ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor, Commissioner Butler, excuse me?
Aye.
And Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Item 12H, resolution 14 dash 22. Commissioner Butler?
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee to formally accept the subdivision improvements associated with Sweet Briar Springs subdivision phase two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, members of the commission, just, just briefly, this item is a result of, you may recall that over the last couple of years, we've had discussions about when subdivisions were completed and bonds were released, the question of whether or not the city had actually accepted infrastructure. As you're, as you're aware, when a development is prepared, there are developer agreements and other things that are necessary to construct sidewalks, storm drain, curb, gutter, roadways, things of that nature. At some point, those items become the property of the city. It's one thing to plat those items, as second, for the city to go in and accept and say that this infrastructure meets the construction as planned and designed and the city's prepared to take ownership of that. This is the first one the city's done, and I believe 11 years, that we've actually gone through and examined those to make sure that we follow through with all of the inspections, make sure that all the bond requirements have been met and that it's prepared to be owned by the city and operated by the city. So you will see more of these as they come through and this will become the standard for us. When a phase of a subdivision or a development or a road or other thing that is intended to be the city's is ready to be conveyed, then we will convey these through acceptance by the Board of Commissioners so the board understands what the, what the city is accepting and that it does meet our requirements as designed.
Does that then meet the, does that then mean that bond will be released at that point?
So what will happen is we will, at this point, we're releasing all the bonds. So this, this has now met all the requirements and it's ready to be accepted by the city.
Okay.
There will be instances where something will be presented to you and it will be ready to be accepted and there will be a maintenance bond attached to that. In this instance, the longevity of this subdivision has been so far out there that that's not necessarily a requirement in this case. In the future, when there are those, then we would recommend the acceptance of that and then we would let you know that there's a maintenance bond on hand and it would expire after a certain period of time. The only thing that we, that would change from that is if there was a construction bond that was in place. And generally, a construction bond means there's a certain window of time that someone can, can take to construct whatever infrastructure has been approved. In the past, let's take Sweet Briar Phase One as an example, that was extended every year for 12 years. That was not known by the city council or Board of Commissioners because it was done at the planning commission level. So we've enacted some documents that will come to you. So generally, a developer will have to request that a bond be extended, not, the belief was that it was a responsibility of the city to extend the bonds. That's false. It's a responsibility of the developer to request that a bond be extended and demonstrate why the extension is necessary. So our regulations will be such that the planning commission can extend a bond once. Any subsequent bonds would have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners and then acceptance of that. So you, as the board, will be able to, to demonstrate to the taxpayers, residents or anyone in that area why that matter hasn't been resolved and what the plan for that is. So this is the first of those. We look to have more of those and this is a huge leap forward for how the city and the Board of Commissioners manages its infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Item 12I, resolution 15 dash 22. Commissioner Butler?
A resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee doesn't, designating items and materials as surplus and authorizing their disposal.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Communications from the mayor and commissioners, I would like to say, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting and I apologize. Vice Mayor Anderson is celebrating her daughter's graduation from college and that's why she's not here tonight. And with that, Commissioner Butler, do you have anything?
Nothing for this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mayor. So you probably saw up there that the fire department sent somebody to the, the fire department and structure conference in Indianapolis. And of course, that costs money. That, that costs the, the taxpayers money. And in the process, what we get back is invaluable. That specific conference is best practice across the country. They have the world's best instructors there. And that firefighter that we sent there gets to come back and then educate all of our firefighters and everything that they, that they, that they saw there. So just a, a great experience and so happy that we're able to send our, our public safety members to those conferences. Also, it is EMS week this week. So if you know a paramedic or EMT, congratulate them on being in the business. This year is 50 years of EMS in the state of Tennessee. So 50 years ago, we first recognized EMS, the ambulances, the paramedics and the EMTs in the state. And everybody often thinks that paramedics and ambulances have been around- And everybody often thinks that paramedics and ambulances have been around forever, and they've been around for about 50 years here in Tennessee. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do want to say congratulations. There are a ton of graduates. Some have already graduated, some are getting ready to graduate, including the vice mayor's daughter from, I believe it was medical school. So congratulations to all those that have graduated or about to graduate. Also, on top of, I did not know this, but in top of it being EMT week, it's also National Police Week. So the EMTs and the police apparently share a week. So thank you to all of our EMTs, the police here in Fairview for keeping us safe and all the hard work that they do. We greatly appreciate it. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And I have nothing. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.